Thank you. Ms. Buck, roll call, please.
Mr. Jivinangelo? Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Here.
Mr. Scapora?
Here.
Mr. Bowdenary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolfer?
Here. May I have approval of the minutes from the December 9th, January 6th, and January 13th? Meetings, please.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
May I have a second, please?
I second them.
Any questions on the minutes? She found it. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have approval of fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of January 2014?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Any questions on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I would like to read a proclamation for a former council member, Mrs. Doris Harold. Is anyone from Mrs. Harold's family here this evening? Whereas Doris Fay Galvin Harold was a pioneer in local and county politics in that she was the first woman elected to Latrobe Borough Council in 1985. She also served three terms and was the first woman to be elected president of the Westmoreland County Boroughs Association. And whereas during her tenure as a member of council, Doris was resolute in her beliefs and would defend her position through the use of persuasion to convince others to share in those beliefs. And whereas she did this with honor, integrity, respect, and civility with those who may have disagreed with her. And whereas Doris was not just involved in the governmental aspect of serving her community, she also served as a member of the Board of Directors of Adams Memorial Library and participated in numerous organizations such as the American Legion for over 50 years, the Latrobe Elks, a volunteer at the Latrobe Area Hospital, and as a member of various activities at St. John Roman Catholic Church. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Latrobe, for themselves and on behalf of our entire community, recognize and honor Doris Fay Galvin Harold for her dedication, commitment, and perseverance to a lifetime of community service to help make our city a better place in which to live. According to the American novelist E.W. Howe, quote, "Living up to ideals is like doing everyday work with your Sunday clothes on," end quote. One cannot envision Doris doing the work of the community without being in her Sunday clothes. Throughout her life, she lived up to high ideals, and for this, we are grateful. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 10th day of February 2014. And Mrs. Harold recently passed away, so our condolences to her family. At this time, we will entertain citizens' requests, and as we discussed, this is another change to our agenda that I mentioned at the January meeting. This section of the citizens' request will relate to agenda items only. If you have anything that you would like to discuss that relates to items that are on the agenda, this would be the time to do it. And then, once we get through all the agenda items, we'll have a second citizens' request section where you can talk about anything you'd like. It's not listed?
Second.
Okay, well, there will be one. After we get through the agenda, before we get into unfinished business. Yeah, we had some computer difficulties, so we were going from memory. So, at this time, anyone have any items from the agenda that they would like to discuss? You can go to the microphone, sir, and state your name and address, please.
It's more of a question. Are all the candidates who are to be considered for the hope in mayor position here, we don't all know them by face or name.
All but one, I believe, is here, and we can certainly introduce them again for you. They were at the agenda prep session at the end of January. Most of them weren't, and they gave a little talk, but we certainly can introduce them again.
I know there were some that were not.
Oh, sir, could you give us your name, please, too?
Harry Albert.
Okay.
878 Main Street, Inlet from the South.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. Regarding the appointment of the additional council member, I think it's very important to remember that the, some of the prior representatives were very prepared when they came to the council meetings, and I hope the council keeps that in their minds when they're voting for a new member. Also, I'm glad to hear that you're going to have a second period of time for the request of--
That was your idea.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
That's called the Miller Addendum.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You weren't here at the January meeting, but I did give you credit.
Well, I've only got three minutes, so it's been a long time coming, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I think the citizens of Latrobe will appreciate it also. Thank you. Also, I'd like to welcome our representative from the county here tonight, Mr. Courtney. I really appreciate him showing up. I've never met him before, and I was glad to shake his hand. Whenever we vote on a person for the city council, I think it's also important to remind our council members that people that-- I don't know how to say this, because I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but I'm sure I'm going to. It's important, whenever we vote on a council member, that if we vote on somebody that has worked prior to the city, worked for the city later at Latrobe, prior to them being appointed as town council, that they refrain from voting on items that may come up regarding salary, wages, items like that. I know in the past, some of the attorneys on the council have abstained from voting on because they represent different items or different departments, and I always appreciated that. So I think that's important to keep that in mind, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I would like to also recognize Commissioner Courtney is here with us this evening. Commissioner, if you wanted to say a few words, you're welcome to.
Thank you, ma'am. I know you have a lot of items to get through this evening. I'm going to sit through as much as I can sit through before I have to run my next appointment. But I think it's important, as a county commissioner, to get out and meet with all the municipalities in the city. Part of my agenda is to get out to each municipality in Westmoreland County during my term. And I was elected in November of 2011. I just started in January 2012. But as you know, what the Community College is doing here in Latrobe and some other things that are going on, the county is very supportive of Latrobe and the area and what it brings to our area. So it's important for me to meet at these meetings, and if there's something you would like me to know about, either call my office or if you pull me aside this evening, if I'm still here when the meeting is over, I would like to hear about it. You have great community, and anything we can do from the county's perspective to help support, I appreciate it. So thank you for having me tonight, and thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Commissioner Courtney, you're always welcome. The next item on the agenda is committees. Jim, am I going to have to gavel you? I want to, though. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. Again, we don't have any committees established yet. I hope to do that for the January meeting. I wanted to get a full contingent of council before we establish committees. But we did talk a little bit, the council, I talked with the council members, and we'd also like to have some citizen participation on these committees, which is something we've never done before. The council committees will consist of two members of council, and I'm hoping that we could get two or three members of the community to volunteer to sit on those committees as well. I think it would be a good experience for the city residents to participate in, as well as council members to hear directly from the residents. So that's the game plan. Hopefully, we'll have those committees formed for the March meeting, and then they'll be required to give monthly reports. Sometimes that might mean there's nothing to report, but they'll be working on it on a monthly basis. So the next item on the agenda is board and authority reports. Do we have any board and authority reports tonight? Department reports. Chief Boomer? Mr. Bush?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, the individual council members, and city manager for their support of the Public Works Department the past several weeks. I'm sure they received a lot of phone calls, some grand appointments, some blames, some criticism. The Public Works appreciates the fact that you backed us up. Past month, we've seen a lot. We've seen frigid temperatures, 17 days below 10 degrees in the single digits. The snowfall doubled the average, salt shortages throughout the state. We ourselves had equipment breakdowns. Thirty-seven out of the last 41 days, we had some form of precipitation. Snow, rain, sleet, all of the above at one time. We were out 17 times since January 1st, so that's a little over every other day we've been out. In going out and trying to keep our roads the best we can, I realize sometimes they were less than perfect, but it's a balancing act. And it's the way, the condition the roads are versus cost. The better that we want our roads and try to make our roads, the higher the cost. This year, with the cost of salt and everything, every time we go out on a normal salt run, just a small one-inch snow go around, no problems at all, just salting, no plowing, it cost us approximately $3,000. There's a lot of thought and effort that goes in before we go out, but rest assured, even though it is costly, that we take the residents, the motorists, and the business owners downtown, all in consideration, the safety of them. This year, we had budgeted 1,100 ton to buy 1,100 ton of salt. I'm at 1,069 right now with a few weeks to go, so we're probably going to be overbudgeted, not only in salt, but its associated line items. Overtime, truck repairs, breakdowns, our contractor that does our sidewalks, all this is going to go over. How much? I hope not that much. I'll be getting those figures to you later on. We put down approximately 300, or 1,300 tons of salt so far this year. I had some left from last year, and our season started November 26th with the first salting. Thank you.
How are we on salt, Joe? Did we get any in?
We've been constantly getting a couple loads here and there. We don't have a big supply, but I've never run out yet, thanks to our supplier.
Well, I'd like to commend you guys because everybody, you look at the news every day, and lots of municipalities are without salt or are under conditions that have been a lot worse than ours, so you guys have done a great job, Joe. Thank you. Anne? I think I saw you. Do you have anything to report?
No, I have more, Madam Mayor.
Chief Brazili's not here, is he? Okay, the next item is unfinished business, and that is the appointment of the individual as a member of council to fill the vacancy of the unexpired term set to expire December 31st, 2015. We will introduce the candidates, and I wanted to say one thing. We have five really good candidates. It's a great position to be in. Obviously, there's only one position available, but I've spoken with all other candidates, and they've all agreed that the four candidates that are not selected would be willing to serve on a committee, so I think that's wonderful. I appreciate your interest, and thank you all for volunteering for this position. At this time, if the four candidates would stand and just go over to the microphone and introduce yourselves so that the residents can see who you are.
Robert S. Forge, former council member.
Eric Bartels, teacher at Noron High School.
Jack Martha, former council member.
Madeline Smith, retired.
At this time, I will entertain nominations.
I'd like to nominate Madeline Smith.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Robert Forge.
I'd like to nominate Eric Bartels. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Ms. Buck?
No, are we going to do the roll call and then say the name, or are we going to do one at a time? We have, we would do a roll call, and the individual would name the person they're voting for. What we're going to be looking with three people, if there is a low finisher, then that person would be dropped from that round, and then we would be voting on the item two.
You need your microphone, Jim, so everybody can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault. Do you want me to repeat?
Yes, please.
The method of voting would be that we have three nominees. We would vote and say the name of the candidate we're voting for. If we have a low person, and I would think there probably should be one, that low person's name would then be dropped, and then we would be voting on the remaining two individuals.
Mr. Scapora?
Robert Forge.
Mr. Bowdenary?
Madeline Smith.
Ms. Beazey?
Madeline Smith.
Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Madeline Smith.
Mr. Jivinangelo's absent. Mayor Wolfer?
Eric Bartels?
We have three Smith, one Forge, one Bartels.
We have majority of the core here, Madam--
Okay.
--Major.
So that's it? Okay, so congratulations, Madeline.
Thank you.
Wow. Jim can swear, Mr. Kelly can swear in. Can you not?
Yes, I can, Madam Mayor. Before I do, though, I would like to have a resolution which has passed. I will read the resolution. It says, "Appointment for vacant office of council member." And it cites that on January 6th, Councilmember Rosemary M. Wolford was sworn in as newly elected mayor, and by virtue of this, she cannot occupy two offices at the same time and a vacancy was created. Now therefore, be resolved, Section 1, that Madeline Smith being the same, is hereby appointed as a member of the council of the city of Latrobe to fill the unexpired term of Councilmember Rosemary M. Wolford. Said term to expire on the 31st day of December 2015. Section 2, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately. Resolved and considered, the state of the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-16. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo? Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Yes.
Mr. Bowdenary?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes.
I was trying to stop you, because you might have to go back down there. She has to be sworn in. I wonder if we can do it right there if she can--
We're looking for a note, then.
Well, maybe this would be a good time for us to break into executive session, because we need to have an executive session, so while he's looking for his note, we'll break into executive session. Can Madeline join us in executive session, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
We will try to keep it short. Do you want me to-- You can do the swearing in, however. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. We now have-- I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, repeat your name. I--
I, Madeline Smith.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend--
And I will support, obey, and--
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth--
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge--
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office--
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, we all. Apologize for the time it took us in that executive session. That executive session was to discuss matters of personnel. We're ready to move on with the agenda, Mr. Kelly?
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is an ordinance, and I will highlight the ordinance. It is entitled, "Establishing Wages, Hours, and Infringed Benefits of Positions of the City of Latrobe for fiscal year 2014, whereas Article 5, ordinances and resolutions of the Home Rule Charter of the City, requires the council, by ordinance, to establish wages, hours, and infringed benefits of positions of the city, now therefore being enacted and ordained, Section 1. That for the position of city manager and director of tax revenue, the salary set forth on Exhibit A attached here to and the hours infringed benefits as set forth on Exhibit B, a copy of which is on file at the Office of the City Secretary, being the same or hereby established for the fiscal year 2014. Section 2, that the position, for the position of director of the Police Department and chief police, the salary set forth on Exhibit A and the hours infringed benefits set forth on Exhibit C, a copy of which is on file at the Office of the City Secretary, being the same or hereby established for fiscal year 2014. Section 3, that for the position of director of administration and finance, salary set forth on Exhibit A attached here to and the wages and hours infringed benefits set forth on Exhibit D, a copy of which is on file at the Office of the City Secretary, being the same or established for fiscal year 2014. Section 4, that the salaries infringed benefits for all other non-collective bargaining unit personnel be entered hereby established for the fiscal year 2014, as those salaries infringed benefits set forth on Exhibit A attached here to. Section 5, that the wages and/or infringed benefits for all non-uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for fiscal year 2014 are hereby established by the collective bargaining agreement entered into between ASME, AFL-CIO, Council Lady 3, Level 6, 29, and the city of Latrobe approved the 14th day of December 2009 for a term from January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2014. The collective bargaining agreement establishing such wages infringed benefits for the non-uniform collective bargaining unit personnel is incorporated herein by reference, a copy of the bargaining agreement is on file at the Office of the City Secretary, Section 6. The wages and/or infringed benefits for all uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for fiscal year 2014 be in the same or hereby established by collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Latrobe Police Department effective January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2015, and the collective bargaining agreement establishing such wages infringed benefits is incorporated here by reference, a copy of the collective bargaining agreement for the period effective January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2015, is on file at the Office of the City Secretary, Section 7. By this order, the city of Latrobe does hereby reapprove and ratify the wages, hours, and infringed benefits as currently set forth in both of the collective bargaining agreements. Section 8, that any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent therewith be in the same or hereby repealed, Section 1, that the within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of the post-enactment notice of passage of the same enacted and ordained, the state of the motion would be to enact the ordinances read by this solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a motion to enact the ordinance, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussions? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2014-2. Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Yes.
Mr. Bowdenary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, under the Police Department, there is an item which is an ordinance. It's ordinance number 2014-blank, amending Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 256-17, establishment and/or removal of handicap parking spaces, Section 256-19, loading and unloading, Section 256-51, parking prohibited all times, Section 256-53, two-hour parking limit for all vehicles, Section 256-54, permit parking, and Section 256-55, on-street meter parking facilities. In Section 1, we are identifying various handicap parking spaces that have been established by resolution throughout the year. The first is on the south side of Avenue B, premises located at 30 Avenue B, owned by Deborah H. Stanko. The second one is on the east side of Second Avenue, 142 East Second Avenue, property owned by Lisa Schaefer. The third one is property located at 36 East Second Avenue, Joseph F. Coon being the owner. The next one is 121 Washington Street, property owned by John Almond. And the last one is property owned by Thomas E. Shivitz at 1505 Jefferson Street. Section 2, that there is a repealer-- Section two, that there is a repealer of the handicap parking space located at 30 Avenue B. Section three, that the two-hour parking limit for all vehicles deletes a street which is East Fourth Avenue on the south side, between Leener Street on the east and Polk Street on the west. And also, Chapter 256 was erroneously, there was an erroneous designation in a prior ordinance wherein the designation of East Fourth Avenue was erroneous and should have been designated as West Fourth Avenue, so now under Chapter 256-53, the highway is West Fourth Avenue, the south side between Leener Street on the east and Polk Street on the west. Section five provides that all appropriate officials shall take any and all actions necessary to carry out the effect of this ordinance. Section six indicates that any ordinances or resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section seven, that all other provisions of Chapter 256 shall remain in full force and effect. And section eight, that the ordinance will take effect upon the post-enactment notice of the same. The motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to enact the ordinance.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2014-3. Mr. Bowdenary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes.
That ends the agenda items, or is there something?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as far as the agenda items go, that is it. There is unfinished business for appointments to boards and authorities.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to appoint Linda Box to the planning commission. Mr. Kelly, you have a resolution?
I do, Madam Mayor. The resolution reads as follows, appointment to the Latrobe Planning Commission, now therefore be resolved, section one. That Linda Box being is hereby appointed to the Latrobe Planning Commission for a four-year term, said term to expire on January 31, 2018. Section two, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage resolved in council to state the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-17. Mrs. Caldwell-Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Bowdenary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Charles Moff to the vacant, reappoint Charles Moff to the position on the Latrobe Municipal Authority.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would agree to appointing member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority, now therefore be resolved, section one. That Charles Moff being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire on January 31, 2019, resolved in council to state the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion, please?
I make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Buck.
This is Resolution 2014-18. Mr. Bowdenary?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes.
Is there any new business to discuss, and then we'll do the citizens' request? Sorry, what part? I was going to do new business first, and then do the citizens'. Any new business? Anyone? Only once? Okay, at this time, we have the open forum for the citizens' request. Yes, please. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Leonard. I live on Chestnut Street in Latrobe. I have two questions. Several months ago, we came here to request a tenant registration. I want to know if there's been any movement on that.
Alex, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. We're looking at a package of ordinances, including updating the zoning ordinance. We looked at a rental registration program. In fact, I believe in October, we had a meeting with landlords in town.
Really? Because I'm a landlord, and I was never notified at that meeting.
We had about five or six of our largest landlords come to that meeting. I could say that the meeting was, they were very interested. They felt that they were not the problem, that they were good landlords, and were very concerned about it. However, in the interim time, we've had a new council. In fact, we just completed the addition of a new council member. And as I told at that meeting that day, it would be really the purview of the new council to grant direction of where they'd like to go on a rental registration. Meanwhile, we've continued, and we have draft ordinances of that, and we've pursued also property maintenance, which would affect all owners, whether they're homeowners or renters. It would be treated under the property maintenance code, and again, we've pursued that. So again, the issues are zoning in general, updating the zoning code and languages related to the residential zoning districts and what are permitted and non-permitted uses and definitions in those areas, rental registration, and then the third was the property maintenance. And while we have done work on those and have drafts, as you can see, again, just tonight, we've seated the last member of the council, and having a complete turnover in the council, losing, three members losing their seat, and then the fourth member going up to the mayor's seat, really is prudent now to get this stuff back out in front of them. And one of the reasons, you know, strategic to have Linda appointed to the planning commission is really to see those things carried through. So that's sort of the update of things now.
Right. But how were those landlords notified of the meeting?
Well, quite frankly, what we did was, you know, we wanted to form a committee of landlords so that they have, you know, knowledge of what we're up to. And there were some who have, I don't know, Anne, dozens of properties in town, and those were the ones we started with. Because again, they're the ones that are going to be most impacted and have really the most to lose or gain, and have been investing in our community for a long period of time. So that's where we're really working when we started. And you're welcome, if you'd like to be a part of that, you may.
Alex, if I may, the other thing, we're going to, one of the committees we're going to form is a new committee that I don't know that we've ever had here. And it's, yeah, it's going to be a community development committee, two council members, and I, the committee can't get that large, so maybe three residents, if you're interested in serving on a committee like that. And our hope would be that that would be something that that committee would do, is they would work with Anne and Alex on looking at the ordinances and the zoning issues, and then making recommendations to council as to where we want to go forward. So we hope to start, to form that committee, begin forming that committee with the two council members next month, and get this thing moving.
Okay. My second question is, at that time, at that meeting, we also talked about a neighborhood watch program. I just wanted to know where we were with that.
Alex and I talked about that today, and I know there has been meetings about that, but go ahead.
Chief Bumgar has met internally with us, with discussing staff, as well as with the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program. I believe Ms. Beazey was a part of that meeting as well, and council member Beazey, or Jim, if you would like to give a closer update of that meeting you held recently, I'd appreciate it.
We held a meeting. We are going to establish neighborhood watch. There's a meeting actually to set down some guidelines, and with Ms. Beazey, Nick Tulli, a community service officer, on Monday night.
Is anyone willing to attend that, or is that closed?
That's closed, dear.
Closed?
We're just getting, getting a friend or other, and calling the charter of what we want, what we expect, what we don't expect.
And then will that be presented at the council meeting?
Yes, it will. It will probably be presented, and it will be, it will be the community's bidding. The police will not run it. The neighborhood watch will run it.
Okay.
We are just there to assist.
Assist with the establishment of that?
Right.
Sue, I'm working with Nick.
Okay.
And so then I'm meeting with Nick and Chief Bumgar next Monday. But yeah, one of the big things will be to establish that neighborhood watch and recruiting people in each ward. We were thinking about breaking it up into wards, could even be street blocks. So it's good to know that you're interested because, you know, we'll need recruits, sorry? Or if you know others that are interested.
Yes, I believe that I can.
Actually, actually, which will, over Monday, if it won't be a ward, it will actually be our patrol teams, so it'll be easier to recognize by the police when the citizens do it.
Okay.
They won't have to worry about where the risk to revenge starts. They'll know exactly the zone they're in.
All right. And then do those citizens report to the police, or how does, is that going to be the change?
They'll actually be, there will be, you know, like a block cap. We'll use a model, you know, that's been successful in the past from a different area or whatever. I'm not sure if it'll be able to be implemented, but really, is that going to be all systems go?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Frances Trinetti. I live on Welton Street, next to the Oxford House. I just, one, I wanted to tell you how happy I am that Linda Box was appointed to the planning commission. I think that's a good thing. I have spoken to Alex about my concerns about the Oxford House and safety concerns that we have. I'm glad that the neighborhood watch is going to be implemented, and also tenant registration. We continue to have safety concerns up on our block, cars coming in at all hours of the night, residents next door being logged out and pounding on the door trying to get in, and it's a concern. I do have a positive. One of the residents last Monday did offer to shovel my sidewalk. I thought it was nice. I declined because I liked the exercise, but that was a positive. We have a concern, though, that we don't know who lives in that house, and some of my neighbors have found the solution because there is no tenant registration by writing license plate numbers down. Whether that's right or not, I don't know, but they're just concerned because of the revolving door and, you know, fearing for the safety. I know that I've seen the patrol cars up on our block, you know, more recently than we had before, which is good, but there still is safety concerns. I also spoke with Commissioner Courtney about it. He's aware of the situation. And I have spoken to the office of Inspector General's office because Oxford House is not registered in the state of Pennsylvania as a charitable organization, so they are not allowed to solicit funds. It's my concern that things should be monitored up there, and they haven't been, but I do appreciate the police patrols that have been coming up and down, and I appreciate what Alex is at least up for.
Thank you.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. Regarding the tenant information, I believe that Latrobe already has a program and a pamphlet that has to be filled out any time a tenant is, goes into a rental property. I know when I had rental property, I had to list my tenants on a piece of paper and give it to the city of Latrobe. So we already have a program that exists. I think it was mainly because of the garbage, okay? However, I paid my, I had a dumpster, and I still gave everybody's name because I think that those tenants should have to pay taxes also, and that's a good way to get tax revenue to the city if we know who's in, living on our properties. So I just thought, you know, that we already have a program, and if everybody hears to it, it shouldn't be a problem.
Do you want to comment?
Just simply, thank you, Mr. Miller. That registration, again, as you noted, dealt with sanitation, and in the cases where the landlord is responsible for the bill, really, no matter how many units they have, we don't ask them to register the tenants. And in cases where, you know, the tenant's responsible for the bill, it's just basically who's the responsible party. So in the case for the Oxford House, I believe they have a group leader, and the group leader would be the person's name on the account, would be the person responsible for the account and so forth. And as was pointed out by Ms. Trinetti, there's a bit of a revolving door. It's just the nature of what they do. So somebody might be there for four weeks, someone might be there for six weeks, and there's no requirement through the sanitation, you know, that they register during that period of stay. It's just, again, as long as that person who's responsible for the bill isn't turning over, you know, that's how we handle it.
One other thing I forgot to mention, I'm on a zoning hearing board, and I know I have, certain people on different boards have limitations on what boards or something they can be on. So would a person on a zoning hearing board be allowed to be on like a planning commission or something where they're talking about maybe issues resolving, you know, talking about issues on rental properties and things like that?
Jim, I would have to look it up, but I'm going to say no, and the reason is there is an interplay between the planning commission and the zoning board. Some issues come to the planning commission first for their approval, and then they move on to the zoning board. So having somebody on both boards can get a little tricky, is what I'm trying to say to you. Now, planning commission and some other organization or board or commission might not be prohibited?
Well, there could be an extension or something like that, you know, for instance, a city council member saying they're voting on a certain issue or something like that, maybe looking at something like that. Somebody might want to help, you know?
No, I understand when you say.
Any other citizens?
It's possible to abstain if that situation occurred, right?
Well, if you have a number of, I think the comment was it's always possible to abstain, but if you have somebody abstaining too much because of the relationship, then where is their effectiveness on either board?
Any other citizens have anything they would like to say tonight? City managers' report?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my manager's report is presented as written. It's also on the table here at the desk near the agenda, and members of the public are welcome to get it. It will be posted online as well. Just a couple of things to know, Joe has already mentioned the weather that we've had and its effect on the budget. We will be monitoring that closely. I give Joe Bush a lot of credit personally. The 17 events are just part of it for Joe. He monitors around the clock, will get calls from 911, he'll get calls from the city manager, and he'll make a ride around town, and he makes a determination on whether or not it warrants, you know, the calling out the crews and the assault. That is a tremendous amount of work, and the fact that Joe's on the job just gives me a lot of peace at night because I know he's doing it well. He also manages well the assault and the manpower altogether. I think like a few other public works directors, I'm not trying to be critical of other municipalities, but maybe some of the reasons why they may have run out of assault is because they don't have Joe Bush as a public works director, and we do. There's a number of things to stay active on. I really appreciate council and members of the public to review carefully the manager's report. I've already mentioned the executive session, number of the personnel activities I've been active in, and I'm available for questions with that. And stay tuned, KDK reporter Ken Rice was in town last week doing a little filming on Pango, and so stay tuned for his report on that. It was a nice sunny day, a bit cold, but nonetheless, he was able to get some great shots of town, and I thank you, Mayor, for participating in that audit. New auditors have come on board, and they've begun their work, and there's a lot of activity going on to get that caught up. And I appreciate Barb Box's effort. She's really gone over and above to make sure they've got dozens of reports. You're trying to really, for the auditors' sake, get caught up in two or three months' worth of work in about two or three weeks, so thanks to Barb, she's able to get that done and really make for an easy transition to a new auditor. Do you have any questions?
Alex, I do. In your In your report, you mentioned about the closing of the Murphys or Baldridge Bridge, and I wanted to ask Mr. Bush, how is that going for the operations at our transfer station with the closing of the bridge? Have we noticed any drastic change in business or complaints from customers that we try to service to there?
With the weather that we've been enduring the past month, I really don't know if it has affected our business. I do know that the state did a very good job of posting the detour. In fact, there are several signs around that say, you know, Latrobe City Transfer Station Open for Business and that, and really haven't heard anything negative from any of the customers other than how long is it going to be down? It's kind of tough right now, though, with the weather we've had.
In Joe's report, he actually provides the number of tons from last January compared to this January. And as Joe noted, the weather really is clouding the data so that we can't really determine whether or not there is an impact. But we do want everyone to know that the transfer station is open for business unless Joe has it closed because we're trying to clean ourselves out with plow and be a little patient with us, but nonetheless, it's open. But if you would notice on Joe's report, he actually goes ahead and gives you the month last January, which we had about 231 tons last January, and we did about 179 tons this year. And again, there's so many factors that take into effect. It really isn't easy to tell whether weather is the main factor for the bridge, but it is something we're monitoring closely, and we're trying to get the public to know that they can access the transfer station during construction.
Any other questions? Under the manager's report, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, again, Joe, to you and your group, and Chief Boomer, to you guys, and all the city employees, we've got a great, great bunch of dedicated people here. I think we're very fortunate to have them. They are committed to the city, as we all are. I think there's a lot of positives right now. I'm very encouraged to see so many city residents here wanting to get involved. We're in the process of updating our resume or our websites and our -- not our resume, our website, and we all have email addresses, I believe, on that website, and we encourage you to email us with your concerns, your problems, your questions, or positive things. We like to hear positive things, too. There's a lot of positive things going on. I ask that the residents be patient. I know there's a lot of ICE out there, and we're doing, you know, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, so I ask everyone to please be patient. And I just have to make one comment. When I started on council 10 years ago, I was the only woman on council. And look at us now! So I just think that's interesting. The other little piece of trivia that Mr. Kelly asked me is, we're wondering if you and your husband are the first husband and wife team to have ever served on council? Because your husband was a council member, was he not?
Yes, I did.
So a lot of history here, and that's really good stuff. So again, please come back next month. Hopefully, it will be warmer. We have an agenda meeting at the end of February. I believe it's the 27th? 24th, I'm sorry, 24th. So look forward to seeing you all. Be careful. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.